I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to question them off?
No, we'll just go with just a little business first.
Well, the only announcement I, excuse me, I have is welcome to the students and all the parents. We were just, Maggie and I were just talking about if, I think we had a robotics presentation like quite a few years ago.
Uh, I think the first year we did it.
Yep, so it was very interesting, so we're looking forward to it. Consideration to approve the minutes from March 1st, 8th, and 15th.
Salute.
Second.
Jolene Bradley.
All those in favor? They are approved.
abstain Jill?
Yes.
And this is perfect.
Sorry.
And Allison too.
Allison, thank you Allison.
Welcome back Allison.
Can you get both sides of the room?
Consideration to approve the proposed agenda for the April 6th, 2023 Board of Directors meeting.
Salute.
Second.
Bradley, Jolene.
All those in favor? The agenda is approved.
And Jill abstaining.
Curriculum presentation robotics club of SBMS.
If you'd like to shut the door so you can see better, there's a face I can't see there. All right, perfect.
Ashley's dad. Well, it's nice to be here tonight. I'm Ashley Russell. I teach here at SBMS. This is Harper Bear, 6th grade, Ashley Moore, 6th grade, Riley Morris, 6th grade, and Aiden Gould, 6th grade.
Welcome.
They have all done fabulously and these two represent one team, these reached on a team. We had four teams reach finals this year. So we will find the results out on May 4th, I believe, yes. So fingers crossed. So um this is the fourth year our school has entered this contest. We made finals three years. Uh, one of the years was emergency learning year, so the kids didn't get to finish. They were so close. And then I found it does not work remotely. We tried, but it was difficult. And then brought it back this year. And these guys have worked since September. The mission started late October, but they have worked every week, sometimes twice a week, to complete their missions. So Wonder Workshop sends out, they start with five missions. When the students are able to, if the students are able to finish those, they get into the invitationals, the finals, and all these teams did. And then they worked for five weeks just on this one mission. Which they had to, they start here. Would you go put that rubber one on C8? They start at that end of the mat and have to, without touching any of the planets, or come down to Earth, back to Earth, and drop their artifacts. So Ashley's team used the gripper made out of Legos. Aiden built a box that pushes, that pushed a plastic egg. And Harper's team built with Legos, like a snowplow, to push his artifacts down. The tricky bit was they only had 25 centimeter gap. With right turns, I can't explain it, but with right turns, the robot isn't as accurate and you gain centimeters. So if you gain a centimeter, 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 by the time you get to your 25 centimeter gap, it is complicated. And in this, the final mission is always complex. One year they had to build a six-foot cardboard bridge. This year they had to make a moving asteroid belt. About pop in a battery or two. So I am very good at scrounging. And these motors and the battery contraptions were in the closet from back when we had the science kids for science. So I, thank you Aiden. Alls I did was explain to the kids how to put them together, and this is what we came up with. So I'm guessing it works for moving asteroid belts. Right. What, what were you going to say? Do you remember? We rehearsed.
For, I, I um
What was your hardest part?
My, my hardest part was creating the box. So um, I tried to make a box that could fit an egg in and kept on doing this. So I had to cut some tape around it and keep on squishing it until um, I could fit an egg in there.
I bet it took thirty tries from there. It pers, it's, it has definitely taught the students persistence. How about you, explain what you did?
Um, one of the things that I did was the thing that you can see on the book, the robot.
Can you speak up just a little?
Um, the thing you can, the thing that I made was um, the thing on the robot.
The gripper.
The gripper. It, it hold, it's made to hold something so that when it's driving, it can hold it, and then when it gets somewhere, I can open or close it.
Right. You guys have your code ready. Do you want to run it?
Yeah.
And Harper will speak?
We need to do that.
Oh yeah. Please.
Take it up.
Wait, what?
Turn on the, well, yeah. And it splits in when you, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So with this program, I'm not allowed to show them how. Like when they did functions and variables, I could show them how to do a function, how to do a variable, but then they're supposed to figure the rest out themselves. I'm not sure if it'll make the gap because we had tape on the mats. You have to have it exactly the same place every time.
So which student is controlling this right now?
Yeah, I got it.
Got it.
She had, oh. Yeah, I think it is. And right now the gap is a little bit wider. I didn't bring a meter stick with me. They're only allowed 25 centimeters, so that's less than a block.
And the robot's just small enough.
Yes.
Can I have it fit through? Can I ask a question? Do you, do you have to program your robot to move on those?
Uh, yeah, the thing's on. It's called Blockly.
Okay.
It's a language. So Harper and Aiden have played with Python a little bit, which I'm not going in. But uh, the Dash robots use Blockly and the Sphere robots that we have use Blockly as well. Cause I've already talked to Ms. Day. Um, these guys age out this year for Dash, for this contest. Um, we've got the Sphere robots and they also have a contest that I'd like to try next year so that I can keep them as 7th and 8th graders. Yes, Harper.
Uh, don't they both also support JavaScript?
Yes, they do. Um, the Q robot supports JavaScript.
Oh yeah.
So there's many different coding options available.
That's cool.
So Harper, do you want to talk about yours?
Yeah.
Do you want me, do you want to put it down there?
So our team, sorry, I apologize. Oh, our team, oh, we made a, on the front of it, we made a, this Lego contraption, which it's a, yeah, like a plow. It's not very complicated. It's a simple device, but I, I had, and I take this cup to this yeah, I guess a cup together and it, what it allows it to do is if it moves this way, it carries the cup with it, so it shouldn't, it should, it should, it should go with the robot. Oh.
If you turn on your robot, I'll
Yeah.
I'll put it for you and then slide it down.
Is it aligned?
Yeah, uh, these, one of the biggest problems is keeping it straight and the wheel on the back swivels.
Yeah.
So it's um, you have to make sure it's lined up every time.
Don't ruin it yet. The plow fell off.
Okay. Need help?
No. Oh, I just about have it on.
Okay.
It's on. Done.
Ready? So each of the teams had their um, code slightly different. One of the 5th graders, actually the first student to figure it out, um, backed through part of it.
Oh.
It's like a sporting event.
You might have to edit it to the end.
So I think it's been an amazing experience for all of us. Um, they often figure out the problems quicker than I do.
Ms. Russell, did you introduce yourself?
Yes, at the beginning, I believe.
Can, how is the competition judged? I mean, obviously every team doesn't make it successful.
It's a worldwide contest, so we have to submit a code, a code key. Um, which is safe, it brings up a, a secure code, and I submit that in a video of it running. And the corporation judges it, and there's a rubric involved. And then um, like, it'll be released in May. Quite often, at least one of the winners is from, from the Far East. Taiwan, or Japan, or Indonesia, I think, was one year. But uh, there's usually a US winner as well, out of the, out of the three.
I mean, do you get extra points? You said someone backed through part of it. Do you get extra points for complexity or?
Uh, there are bonus points. The moving asteroids were worth bonus points. There was um, actually, let me, that's a couple weeks. The bonus points were if the asteroid had movement and if the sample pod detached from Dodge, from Dash this time. And there was challenging, there was challenge points with this one too, avoiding the asteroids making it to Earth. There's always bonus points for each mission.
Where was the competition?
It's virtual. So it's, they didn't release the statistics this year. They usually say how many countries are involved. I don't know if they'll do that when they announce the winners this year, but um, I think last time it was 35 countries and over 3,000 teams.
Are all the students roughly the same age, middle school age?
Uh, 5th and 6th grade, there's um, ages for, there's the pioneer cup and the innovator cup. One is nine and 10, and the other's 11 and 12. And so these, it was, it was 5th and 6th grade here in the middle school. But if we do the Sphero competition next year, I could do, it would be, we could do the whole middle school as well as this. But I probably, if I coached, I should do this with the younger kids in the Sphero with 7th and 8th grade. And then I also need to get into the Lego robots we now have too, because they speak Python, and I know these two would like that.
So when these students age out, is there anything beyond this?
Yeah, not with these robots. They used to have one that used the Q robot, which was like the next one up, as Juan Harper spoke about, that also speaks Java. And they did not do that part of the competition this year. So that's why I looked this spring for what can we do next year? And that would be where the Sphero robots are. They're like balls. And they roll around and it's again, it speaks the same language, it speaks Blockly. But it's more complicated because these have a, you can set their speed and set their centimeters. But with the Sphero, it's centimeters per second. So it gets a lot more complicated to decide how far you need to go. There's more math involved.
Is this in-school class or is it an after-school?
After-school. I, I have used the Sphero in my classroom, and about 20 of the 6th graders have been working with that during enrichment RTI sessions.
How many times a week do you make?
For that, it's 30 minutes, four times a week. This has been after-school, once a week for an hour and a half. And then once we got, once it was crunch time, we did it twice a week. The second day wasn't necessarily mandatory, but the only, the only team who did make finals didn't do the extra days. It just, it takes a lot of time and a lot of troubleshooting.
So do we have this in high school? Is there, is there high school kids doing it?
That I don't know.
Not that I know of.
No?
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
You're very welcome.
So I hope you continue to respond to my emails when I say, hey, I have a great idea. So thank you for coming.
So before, before you go, I just want to say to the students and the parents, you'd be awfully proud. Coming in, talking to a group of strange grownups, this is a challenge. I thought you represented yourself very well. I've been a parent when my kids are trying to do stuff and the fact that it landed on the Earth, both tribes. As a parent, right, you stress is it gonna make it? Holy smoke. I thought you, you kids were super impressive. Uh, I think our board just saw a great representation of our school district. You should be proud, your parents should be proud. Thanks for taking time out and coming to show us some of the great things happening in our school.
And no, they were very excited about it, and I'm, I'm proud of them as well.
Very cool. Super job. All right.
All right. Grab a robot and an iPad.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's an after-school, yes.
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 I'd like to see more of this, because this is the second demonstration that we've had of what kids and teachers are doing.
Yeah, terrific.
All right, let's see. We are going to go into executive session. Consideration to enter in the executive session to discuss negotiations pursuant to one MRSA section 40568.
Brad, Jolene.
All those in favor? We're in executive session.
I didn't get everybody in favor. Sorry, one more time. All those in favor? Is anyone, okay, perfect, thank you.
Now you can grab the camera.
I know, but it's like, it goes throughout. Let's see if you can get it to work. Okay, chill.
Does she remember?
Give me the high sign when you're ready. Next item on the agenda is finance committee report on the April 5th meeting, and our next meeting is the 3rd.
Okay, so that's me. Uh, so we met yesterday. It's usually this, this morning, but we bumped this to Thursday. State subsidy's been received and recorded. Five town revenues received and recorded. Revenues continue to exceed expenses and expenses are in line with the budget. Food service expenses exceed revenue. Uh, this is common. Uh, as we move forward, we are closing the gap and by the end of the year, hopefully revenues will surpass expenses. We'll be right side up. And adult ed revenues are ahead of expenses and in line with budget. Another point, uh, just one other final piece about finance. Uh, folks in town may have noticed that diesel prices are slightly different just a few miles down the road. Uh, so we will explore the best pricing on diesel for our bus fleet, uh, as the, as time moves on. And board member had mentioned that, and we'll certainly explore that. We want to get the best deals we can for our taxpayers. Very important. Thank you.
Any question? Any question? Facilities report.
I'm going to ask me too. All right, I'm going two for two. So facilities report, uh, very brief meeting. Uh, the scoreboard company, uh, where we bought the scoreboard from for our varsity field, uh, is working with Johnny Savante as our facilities director and plans to install in April. There's been a delay. A couple of companies backed out of that. That was in the fall, and then winter came, and snowbanks and access to the board. But they're hopeful with the 70-degree weather coming next week, all the snow will be gone. They'll be able to get out there and install our new scoreboard for our game field. The all-sky camera that the board approved and thought was a great idea to look at the meteors and the night sky and hopefully transitions to our science and math program. Uh, should be installed in April as well, so we can start using that for data. And in terms of ESSR projects, we'll talk later, but uh, we're certainly hopeful to have a main office proposal approved for a main office renovation a little later on in this meeting. That was our construction meeting.
Questions for Brad? Ed Brad. Any questions for the council? Moving right on. Students report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're pleased to report that the musical had a great turnout and even better performance by all of the cast members. They put on Charlie Brown Musical, which is based on the original comics and cartoons, but they also incorporated a lot of comedic parts for kids. The first night, they even had to get more seats out for the volume of people. The exhibition of the 3D projects created by the seniors was held on Thursday, March 23rd. It was great to see their plans for the next chapter of their lives. Seniors are now well underway preparing their senior exit exhibits. Intramural sports have been very successful. They have been playing volleyball in the gym for the past three weeks, but they've had to pause due to teams needing to practice in the gym space. They're excited to get outside when the weather is nicer to incorporate activities like pickleball and ripple ball. The ELBOW program has had a very busy march. On March 8th, students had the opportunity to take a career field trip to Heely Bars, a motorcycle company located in Cornish that provides motorcyclists with better handling equipment without distracting them from the joys of riding. They are careful to design the perfect fix for each bike. Students also had the chance on March 22nd to take a tour of Hunting in Dearborn, which is a world-class tool-making facility located in Fiverr. Hartley and Label printers even came to the high school to give a presentation. All of the juniors are working on completing the SOAR project with the goal of getting students to start thinking about their future and to prepare for the work involved with putting together senior projects and exit interviews. Students took surveys in order to get a sense of their interests, strengths, and priorities in potential careers, and those results helped them to align themselves with a chosen career. There was a research aspect, a presentation portion, and a consideration of the next step, including what coursework they should take their senior year and what they will have to do beyond school to achieve that career. Tonight at 6:30, there was a student showcase night for members of the middle and high school bands to have the opportunity to show off certain pieces that they have worked on outside of group pieces for the upcoming spring concert.
Upcoming events, this Saturday, April 8th, our very own Corps of Cadets will be hosting their triennial Cadet Military Spring Ball at the Sanford Elk Lodge. There will also be cadets from Dover and Massabesic. Each year, one of the three schools is in charge of hosting, and this year is our turn. This is a great way for cadets to build relationships with cadets from other school. We hope all cadets enjoy their time. On April 11th, the third part of the Career Workshop Series will take place where students will learn how to write a dynamic resume and the proper tools needed to promote themselves. Then, on May 2nd, the fourth and final part of the Career Workshop Series is taking place to teach interview skills. On April 12th at 1:00 PM, Ms. Samwar will be hosting an event called Woman Breaking Barriers, which is designed for female high school students to experience a panel discussion with women in various industries that have been traditionally dominated by the male population. They will share their journeys, struggles, and successes. Copperland County Federal Credit Union will be sponsoring an event in the high school gymnasium on April 25th from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. Students in personal finance and senior seminar classes will have the opportunity to attend and learn about credit, living expenses, building a budget, and salaries. Spring sports are up and running, so we hope the snow melts away, so our athletes can have some, some games on our beautiful fields, and it has been a great start to the fourth quarter.
Suzanne, as far as senior exhibits, exit exhibits, is the board, um, welcome to come and work with those?
They're usually private between families and the students because they share a lot of personal information.
I'll invite you to mine.
Oh, perfect. But however, at next week's curriculum committee meeting, we are going to have one senior or former senior share a portion of their senior exit exhibits. You actually can get a perspective of what they're typically like.
Wonderful. Good, thanks.
Sure.
Maggie, then Brad. The Career Workshop Series, who's teaching that or who's in charge of that?
So Ms. Samwar's running it. She originally, um, is participated in it when she didn't know she was teaching class, so now her AP literature class does it because that's when the woman comes. She's from Maine. She's a part of like, someone who works for the state helping people get jobs. So she comes down and talks to us.
Do they ever tie in, um, how to apply for a scholarship?
She doesn't, no. Like a scholarship to college?
Right.
No, that would be my mom.
Is there actually a class in that?
No.
I'm reading a number of them now and someone, someone needs to do that, even if you take, even if a week was taken of, of, an English class or something.
I think students get a lot of help on significant amount, I would say, from newest teachers.
Brad?
Well, two things. One, would it be possible to put out a questionnaire, or, I don't know, questionnaire and asking the students who would be comfortable for board members to attend as senior exhibits?
Sure.
That, that way, if the kids are comfortable with it, you know, we might be able to see what happens in senior exhibits.
Well, that's why we're sharing one for at next week's curriculum committee meeting, so you can see what they're like.
Less like reading one scholarship that Maggie was just talking about, scholarship application. You could get one good one. And not that they all aren't good, uh, but uh, you know, I also, in addition, have read many scholarship applications. Uh, and I understand perfectly what Maggie was talking about. That might be an enlightening event for school board members to, uh, do if you could redact names and addresses and then do you, Mrs. Hoxsey, do you want to do that?
Do what?
Do you want to read those? Isn't that one of the words you told me you wrote in an application was wanna?
Oh, wanna, actually. Wanna. Yep. It's, 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 it's very sad. Some of them, and even, I don't care who, well, I do care who would be the person in charge of it, but someone needs to make them so they sound a little bit professional and so forth and so on. Are you talking about somebody proofing them and helping them? Yes.
Absolutely.
But I would suggest, first of all, there'd be a week of, in English, I don't know where else you want to put it. Where a teacher would, um, tell the kids, okay, you need to make sure you have this, and you want to make sure you do this. It's I will say that Betty and I are fortunate. We are reviewing two scholarships from the high school for the Health Centers, um, award. And we were very impressed with both of those. Really? Well, I'm, I'm, I'm doing three. One of them only, one of them has 26 applicants. Good. Good, I guess.
I got a question.
Sure.
You were viewing two, two scholarship applications or application, many applications for just, for two scholarships?
We also received applications from Fiverr Academy, Kennett, and Massabesic, and Body Eagle.
Okay.
Cause they're in our catchment area.
But
But we were impressed with the two that came from South Dakota.
You only got two from South Dakota? I would just say this to, to scholarship folks, if they're not up to par, by all means, don't have to give a scholarship.
Oh, no.
Nobody's worthy based on what they've turned in, and I would suggest that you just don't give it.
Well, my feelings are a little hurt as long as, because I applied for your scholarship.
Did you say wanna?
I had read yours. I missed saying it last. Well, thank you for the student report.
Of course, Ms. Ingram.
Curriculum report from March 8th.
Yes, the committee visited, visited the industrial technology lab, where Mr. McLaughlin had four of his welding students gave us a tour and explained what type of welding they were doing. Since he has assumed the position of teacher in the lab, he has been updating it to accommodate an increasing number of students who are still in the trades. Two of the upper-class students have already been accepted at White Mountains Community College and have earned college credit already. He works closely with Elizabeth Samwar, the EOL coordinator, and placing students who are interested in welding or other industrial arts into the community opportunities. Our next meeting is April 12th. Our next meeting, this April twelfth, is through.
Any questions about curriculum? And you have a meeting coming up next week. Well, this committee, we are meeting, uh, tomorrow. And, um, I will be making a report or who else on the board is on, well, as you are, right, Allison? You're not meeting, no?
No, not this go-around.
Is it, is it only meeting? Anyway, I'll be making a report next week, by next month on that. Lake Region.
We had a LRVC advisory board meeting on March tenth at the school in the conference room. Bert Wolf and myself attended for MSAD fifty-five. There were two, um, Sauk Valley drops in attendance or enrollment last month from the co-op program due to non-attendance at Tuesday and Thursday classes. We took a program tour of the computer technologies classroom and talked with students who were working on various projects. I just have to say it was, uh, very impressive, the things that they were doing. They have a new, um, 3D scanner tool, so they can scan things that will then print on their 3D printer, um, and the amount of projects they were taking on, either just for fun with that or for computer coding, or they showed us a computer unit that they actually built to meet the needs of what they needed for some CPU drive, I don't know, I'm kind of like Carl sometimes. Was amazing in their classroom and it was, um, really fun to see kind of a behind-the-scenes thing. Law enforcement program update, Mr. McDermott is planning to break the program into modules by semester next year to allow students to do parts they are particularly interested in, like criminal law investigations, um, PTs, CPR, first aid, um, NRA firearms, safety certificate and such, and, um, we can call with more questions. They're going to get a lot more specific information out to each district on that. We had a lot of questions that day on how that would work and, um, the fact that students really needed to know and understand that if they were signing up for just one part, they weren't leaving there fully certified and make sure there wasn't any confusion, by doing only the part that they really were interested in or the easy part or whatever it might be. The MEPRI principal survey on academic credit, uh, David Morse went over questions about credit earning. Um, Bert Wolf already completed the survey for our district. Student services coordinator report, Walter Rithlin. Career fair coming up on May fifth, nine-thirty A M. to twelve-thirty P M., anticipating about eleven hundred students coming through in different groups, uh, roughly ninety-eight presenter booths. I don't remember, he was inviting middle school students too. Um, it's not just for LRVC students or just Lake Region students. Um, I don't know what our plan is for busing kids up there, but there'll be a wide range of ages taking part.
Is it also for the community to come and?
No, because some of it is inside the school.
Okay.
So they don't want people charging through. If you're interested in attending, I'm sure they would let you in. I'll put in a good word for you. Uh, I actually offered to volunteer at it, just to help direct people, because they're going to be going from inside through the school to the gym, background and the whole thing. So, um, they've done some of these before there and it worked really well, but it was before the pandemic and maybe even a couple of years prior to that. Multiple field trips are going out, including HealthOx to the Barbara Bush Center at MMC and Construction Tech, going to Providence, Rhode Island for a construction careers exposition. That will be Saturday, March twenty-fifth. Oh, it's gone by. Uh, for one day, ABC Craft Championships on April seventh at the Augusta Civic Center, and our high school is also sending a bus from the welding program to that as well. Uh, next meeting is actually right now, tonight, a nice dinner meeting, um, program advisory board, and, uh, I'm missing it, so I'll have my fourth one left.
Thank you for choosing this meeting. And you too, Brad. Yes.
I have a question, a comment, I guess. The May fifth, uh, folk hit, uh, meeting, I was there when David Morse had mentioned this and he, I believe he did invite all middle school, middle school kids from all the districts. And so I'm curious as to whether or not we have kids going and that would be, I think that would be a...
We do.
We do.
Yes, our seventh and eighth graders.
Uh, because that's where I think it should happen, to get them interested.
I agree.
And I think that would also be a great time to have some of those kids come in and, and explain what they learned. And, and let them know that before they go, so that...
The pressure.
They, they know, so they're collecting information.
Pay attention.
And there's a huge array of, um, what he's calling presenters that are going to be there too. The ninety-eight that were signed up, probably, he's planning for some of them to be no-shows because that's how those things work, but everything from, um, things that are taught in programs at their school to, you know, just other needs within the community where kids could really go out, make a difference, be hired immediately. Things that aren't kind of an obvious connected field, like say I'm in the, um, you know, police program, criminal justice program, um, things that are a little more obscure, like different security things or, um...
Tattoo law.
Maybe. So they're really connecting a lot of dots with it, I think.
Thank you, Lucy. Any questions? Policy committee, we did not have a meeting, but we will be meeting next Wednesday, the twelfth. Action items, consideration to approve the following policies in the second read and adoption. BBE declaration of a board vacancy, BE, school board meetings, IJOA, field trips, and other student travel. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Julie, Brad?
All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Can, can we have a discussion on one issue?
I didn't hear.
Discussion.
Sure.
Before we vote.
All right, uh, we will hold off that vote and have a discussion.
On the one on field trips and other student travel, uh, Chris Parag, and I thought I put it in my pile, but I didn't bring it. This phrase there that says, uh, may provide such and such, I can't even remember what it was, I wonder if that should be, shall provide rather than may.
You got that, Sue, on your laptop?
Yeah, I was just trying to find it.
First paragraph. I think that's what you said.
This policy provides guidance for the various kinds of trips that may be sponsored by MSAD fifty-five schools? Is that what you were talking about?
I think it is. Some schools sponsor trips and may provide social experiences. I'm not sure which part of the paragraph you were...
I can't, and I should have brought, I thought I had a piece of paper with me and I don't because I wrote this down and, and so if you don't have it, we, we can take it before the final one anyway. This is the final.
This is the final.
This is the final?
This is second read and adoption, yes.
Second read, okay.
So the only other may, it looks, is in addition, some school-sponsored trips may provide social experiences and contribute to the development of a positive school culture.
No, I certainly did not put it there. That's all right, I get it. That's my, my fault.
I was trying to search for the word may. And you said it was near the top of the...
I said, I thought it was the first paragraph.
Those are the only two may's and the first.
Okay. My error.
Listen.
Sorry, go over it.
All right, let's, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, all three are approved. So the general's report.
Sure. Be fairly brief here, reading mainly for, uh, folks potentially watching, you know, you can all read. Resignation, Dennis Blaisdell, social studies teacher and varsity boys' basketball coach. He's also a middle school football and baseball coach. Suzanne Adeau is a technology integrator for Sauk Valley Schools. And two voluntarily, uh, voluntary transfers, Kathleen Doherty from grade four to grade seven, eight E L A. She's replacing Matt Brown, who became, uh, our tech director or will become our tech director July one. So we allow internal, uh, opportunity first, and now we'll post for grade four. And Adrian Mills, uh, due to numbers, specialized teacher at the elementary school moving from the middle school. Uh, both voluntarily transferred to those jobs. In terms of the fall learning plan, I think things have been great, uh, like the students reported. I think we're off to a great spring and hopefully that snow will clear up. Tough to play track, baseball, or softball with six inches of snow in the outfield. So, uh, and I think everything's going very well as a school system. We're only a couple of months from graduation, if you can believe it.
So we still have quite a long's agenda to go, so I'm suggesting we take a short break.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Judy, um, Susan, um, the senior exhibit inviting us or whoever. I've witnessed those and they can get very, very sympathetic. I mean, I've seen parents cry and I've seen seniors cry.
That's why I would want them to have say in whether or not they wanted strangers. It is very emotional, I agree with you.
Yes.
But I will ask Mr. Perkins, I will survey and ask seniors if there's someone who'd be willing to share. But I'm not super optimistic that people will do it. I think it's a very personal about their journey.
It's very, it's very good. I guess I wasn't aware of what it actually entails and if it's a, a family-type thing, then maybe we should not, um, intrude.
Well, you'll know more about it next week and then we can decide if there still will be plenty of time after next week to survey seniors if you still want to move forward with that.
So let's, let's reconvene around eight-twenty-nine-ish and, uh, thank you very much.